Good evening and welcome to the November 20th, 2024, meeting of the Gaithersburg Planning Commission. Almost done with 2024. Alternate Carol Riege is joining us up here, but won't be able to participate in the regulatory stuff because we've got a full house on the other sides. But thanks for being here.
You're welcome. Glad to be here.
If any one of us drops out of our chair and between now and the end of the agenda, you're on.
Just step over easily.
All right. So first up is the approval of our minutes from November 6th, 2024. Is there a motion, please?
Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes of November 6th, 2024 as ready to the record.
Oops. Second?
It's moving to second. And all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Next up, we have a consent agenda tonight. There's one item for AFP-9956-2024. Add personal services as an allowed use to the final site plan at 424 North Frederick Avenue in the CD Quarter Development Zone. This will be an amendment to final site plan. And again, it's a consent item. Is there any questions for staff on the consent agenda?
No.
The barber shops are good.
Okay. If not, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented this evening.
Second?
It's moving to second. And all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. And that takes us then to our site plan agenda, and we have one of those tonight. That's for SP-9915-2024. Construction of a new 11,378 square foot automatic car wash facility at 391 Muddy Branch Road in the C2 General Commercial Zone. This is a preliminary and final site plan review. Presenting from staff is Jasmine Forbes. Good evening, Jasmine. You can do it from over there.
Yes.
Sounds good.
Good evening. So staff, before you present preliminary, final site plan application, SP-9915-2024. The site is located at 391 Muddy Branch Road within the Festival at Muddy Branch Shopping Center. The applicant's requesting to construct an automatic car wash facility. This application comes before the planning commission in accordance with Section 24-12.6B3 of the city code, which requires planning commission to grant final site plan approval. The applicant's also requesting approval of final site plan, sorry, final forest conservation plan pursuant to Chapter 22 of the city code. The planning commission must review and approve forest conservation plans. And lastly, the applicant's requesting a minor sign waiver for directional signs pursuant to Section 24-8.16, subsection four. The planning commission may grant a minor waiver to allow directional sign with a sign face that exceeds six square feet. And I will have the applicant start the presentation this evening.
Great. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Brett Schecter. I am the developer, and I've got Kate Mikhailachenko here with Duberry to help present. I'd like to thank Jasmine, Greg, and the commission for allowing us to present. We are excited to present to you the final site plan for the Whip Clean Car Wash at the Festival at Muddy Branch, the address at 391 Muddy Branch Road. Our objectives are to construct a car wash facility that the community can be proud of and that integrates with and complements neighboring properties. We intend to provide an outstanding building and architectural design. I've also brought along with me, in case anybody wanted to see, feel, or touch, some examples of the building finishes. We also intend to provide exceptional quality, amazing customer service, and unmatched customer experience. And to that point, I heard some folks talk about some other car washes in the area, and it's interesting because a lot of the other washes, not only in the area, region, and country, have started to abandon the full-service offering. And so part of what we want to provide from that unmatched experience is the ability to choose. When you get a car wash, you have the option to breeze through an express wash and simply leave. You can pull over to one of the free vacuum stalls and vacuum yourself. Or if you'd like that full-service experience, you can then loop around, get out of your vehicle, we take it for you, put it on moving belts, creating an assembly line experience for our workers to be shielded by the elements and have that opportunity to work in more of an indoor atmosphere, while customers then would go through a customer lounge, have the ability to purchase refreshments, greeting cards, air fresheners, that sort of thing, and really set a new standard for car washing in the city. We also intend to limit any noise impacts, lighting impacts, and also effectively manage circulation. We have the latest technology proposed with license plate recognition and a monthly membership program to help make the process efficient for customers and our staff. We intend to provide a clean and well-managed site, provide an environmentally sensitive operation, and that speaks to some of the recycling that we do. The site will consist of three underground recycling tanks as well as an oil separator to make sure that we are being as responsible as possible. In addition, we get the benefit of the recycled water. We also obviously will have the opportunity to provide a number of employment opportunities in the community. So now Kate will take over and explain some of the engineering.
So I will just go through the site civil, and if you guys have any questions, feel free to just interrupt me and ask throughout the presentation. So this is the existing conditions of the site as it is today, with the shopping center parking lot to the south of the site, the pet hotel property to the east, and the Muddy Branch Road to the north of the site. It's located on the units 14 and 15 of the Festival at Muddy Branch Shopping Center, and the future address is 391 Muddy Branch Road. It's currently an undeveloped lot, which was originally approved for the development of up to 30,611 square feet of commercial space. The limits of proposed disturbance is 2.17 acres. The stormwater management on site is met by five microbio retention facilities, one filtera, and one underground structural facility. Proposed storm drain pipes are designed to safely convey the site runoff, and they connect to the existing inlet at the southeast corner of the property. The site is ADA accessible. It features one ADA stall, nine regular parking stalls, and 16 vacuum bays. It also has a bike rack for two bicycles. Pedestrian circulation is provided from the public sidewalks to the building. Thirty percent canopy coverage is met on site, and there is also water and sanitary mains, existing water and sanitary mains that are available on site for connection. This is a car stacking exhibit that shows that the proposed lengths of the car stacking meets and exceeds the minimum requirement. Next to the landscaping plan that shows the proposed vegetation and basically just pictures of the plants, trees, and grasses and bushes that are provided on site. This is the exhibit that shows that we are meeting the minimum required canopy coverage for the parking lots on site. The forest conservation plan, so the minimum canopy coverage is 14,179 square feet, and we're providing 14,700 square feet of canopy coverage. And as Jasmine mentioned earlier, we are applying for the minor waiver as a part of this final site plan approval. We show 10 directional signs that are strategically placed throughout the site, basically to navigate the customer, safely navigate the customer throughout the car wash. They are six feet high by three feet wide, so basically they are exceeding the maximum allowed area for the directional signage that the city has. And Brett will go through the building architecture.
So as far as the building architecture goes, we're proposing a building height of 30 feet, building area of 11,378 square feet, with a mezzanine with offices of 786 square feet. The facility will consist of one wash tunnel, two finish bays, and in addition, we have mechanical room, and this is the customer lounge here. The final elevations you see here, again, include a combination of split face block, aluminum panels, EPIS, and I again have some live samples if anybody would like to see or touch them in person. We also have the vacuum shack elevations, which will help with noise reduction of the outside vax, as all of that will be enclosed, and the trash enclosure as well. Here are some examples of the express pay terminals that customers will see when they approach the wash, as well as a bank-style canopy with parking-style gates to allow entry to the wash. This is where the license plate recognition will be, and it will recognize customers and/or frequent wash members and allow easy access to the facility. Also, you see there pictured are some of the free vacuum stalls, where we have mat racks, compressed air, trash cans, and of course, the vacuums as well. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
I actually, and I hope I'm not putting anyone on the spot, but can you talk a little bit about the water recycling and how that whole thing works? That sounds very interesting to me.
Absolutely. So what happens are, or is, the facility has three, I think it's 1,500 gallon tanks, and they're actually placed right here. And so what happens is, in the car wash tunnel, all of the water and soap that hits cars in the tunnel prior to the waxes and any tire shine.
Okay.
There is a dam.
Okay.
That water gets funneled out to the first tank through a series of baffles. The water is then filtered whereby solids are separated, and then in the middle tank, we actually have found that that's the cleanest water, where we have another pipe suctioning back into the car wash, where we reuse that water for usually items that are less critical for the quality of water. In other words...
Like mats or something like that?
Well, more like high-pressure wheels.
Oh, okay.
We would use fresh water when we were mixing with soaps for the best outcome. But where you're using high-pressure water just to blast off dirt, the quality of the water is not as important, and so that's where that water gets reused. The water then continues on this baffling process until it reaches an oil separator, and then it all funnels back out to...
So like, most, you have options for like wax or something like that, and I guess that residue or whatever goes somewhere else? When you, I mean, because you have different stages of what you're applying and doing, right?
Yes. So those basically would go directly to the oil separator or to the last tank where we're not sucking out the water.
Okay. Okay. Thanks. I appreciate that. I know that's outside of this, but I was interested when you talked about the three different tanks.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Do you have any similar facilities in the county or in the state at this point?
At this point, not identical. I had one identical where some of the pictures you see here in Bowie, but I did sell that last year.
Okay.
I also have a facility in Frederick, Maryland currently, but that's an older facility that needs to be renovated. So again, nothing quite like this currently today.
And it's under the Whip Clean insignia?
The one in Frederick?
Yeah.
It is not currently.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
Just real quick, can you walk us through the pedestrian experience? If you're going through that, going through the enclosed wash, you're in the car, you make the left at the end of that wash, and if you're going for full service, you get out of the car somewhere?
Yeah. So just so everybody is clear, obviously, the entry is here. We'll have signs directing folks to which lane they should stack in. All customers will then pay at the pay stations right here. The gates will open, and customers will then enter the car wash tunnel here. They stay in their vehicle through the wet part of the wash. And then again, of course, you can exit over here and out. You can utilize any of the vacuum stalls, or for the full-service experience, you're going to pull your vehicle around over here. You would get out of your vehicle, take the sidewalk over here, and into the customer lounge. Here, you would come in and walk through and browse any gift shop items, refreshments, air fresheners and such, and then when your car is ready, a, mind you, we'll have cameras everywhere throughout the site, in the finish bays as well. There will be a TV monitor in the customer lounge showing the process, so you can also see when your car is being wrapped up. But then, one of our team members will come in and call the guest by their vehicle type, walk them out to the vehicle, make sure everything is satisfactory, and send them on their way. We do have another five free vacuum stalls right here, and that's for, if for some reason a guest just really felt like it needed some extra attention, or we may have a, we may. We intend to have a service where we don't actually do the interior cleaning, but we will offer a towel dry, hand towel dry, as well as tire shine by hand. So those folks will have the ability to use the free vacuums if they choose that service.
So if I'm driving in, and let's say I don't want to have a car wash, just want to vacuum?
You wouldn't be permitted to do so.
Okay. And what are the hours of operation?
The proposed hours currently are 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
Seven days a week?
Seven days a week. Excuse me. Sundays, we would close at four. It would actually be 10 to four. And in some cases, for daylight savings time, in our previous operation, our commitment to the finished product is so high that it's hard to deliver vehicles in the dark. And so we do actually, and had closed earlier in daylight savings times, 5:30 generally, and most times wrapping up around 5:00, and everybody just walking.
And the overhead lighting, will that be the same as the overhead lighting currently in the parking lot at Muddy Branch, at Festival? Or is that going to be a separate system?
It will be separate.
And it will be unique as far as the lighting itself? Will it be at the same height, the same lumens, and so on and so forth?
We intend to coordinate, make sure it doesn't stand out, but there are also guidelines that we need to follow for photometrics that we will be doing. I don't know if you have a comment?
Yeah, we do have a photometric plan as a part of our civil package, so I believe there are five light bulbs on site, and there is also, there are also wall packs on the building, but they were all submitted too, as a final site plan package.
Right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? While you might be thinking about some more questions, let me ask that if anybody is online who would like to come on this application, hit your raise hand button, and we will recognize you if it turns up on the screen. And is anyone here in the audience to testify on this? I'll take that as a...
Honestly? No?
All right. So with that, and I don't see any hands up on the online participants. So Jasmine, you want to do the recommendation, please?
Sure. So staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibit submitted, the applicant's testimony, the staff report, findings, and recommendation grant, SP-9915-2024 preliminary and final site plan approval, minor sign waiver approval, and EMV-9916-2024 final forest conservation plan, provided in conformance with Sections 24-12.6E, 24-12.6G, and 24-8.7A1 of the city's zoning ordinance with two conditions. Do you want me to read out the conditions?
Sure.
Okay. An applicant must submit revised plans to address staff comments related to site plan, landscape plan, cleanup, to be approved by Planning and Department of Public Works Staff prior to final signature of the plans. An applicant must provide a third-party certification of retaining wall plans prior to issuance of a site development permit.
Great. Thanks. Any questions about the recommendation?
During construction, what kind of fencing or what kind of barriers will you be putting up around the site? Because there's parking, the cars going in and out constantly.
Absolutely.
I can go through that. So there is a super sealed fence that will be provided around the site, and also there is, the swales will be protected as well. I guess, does it answer your question or not?
Yeah, just for public safety, that's what my concern is, because there are, that is a main entrance coming down that driveway off of the boulevard, so I want to make sure that that's properly barriered so that people don't obviously either run into it or that there's confusion.
So I mean, I think sealed fence is a sufficient measure, but Alan, do you have anything to add?
Would you introduce yourself and, yeah?
This is Alan Barney.
I'm also with Duberry Engineers, one of the civil engineers, helping Caterina with the project. So typically, the sealed fence is a sediment control feature, but the contractors will typically construct a construction fence throughout the site with a gated, at the entrance of the driveway, there'll be a stabilized construction entrance for the sediment, but there will be typically there's about six or eight feet tall chain link construction fences that will secure the site. And there, they will be, you know, on the inside, outside of the sidewalks, the sidewalk and the driveway won't be impeded.
Great. Thank you.
All right. All right. Any other questions on the recommendation? All right. Any concerns with, I'm going to back into this a minute, any concerns with the minor amendment for signs, for the directional signs?
Only that there may end up being a sort of practical need for a sign at the pedestrian entry to say, you know, stop, stop your car here and walk this way. I'm sure your clients will learn fairly quickly how to do it, but there's a, there's a little bit of an overlap of two lanes that turn into that custom detailing area. So I'm a little concerned about folks getting out of cars. So if we're going to have a sign waiver, you know, for the seventh sign, I guess, eighth sign?
There's 10. Do you want to bring them up? Because that's the purpose of this sign waiver, is to make sure we are clearly indicating where everybody goes.
So I see sign nine, and it says, you know, where you drive into that container, but is there something there to help pedestrians out? And I don't know that that will be decided tonight. What I'm, what I'm thinking about in the waiver, is there, is there a way to keep in that waiver? Or would they need to come back if there was an 11th sign that was needed to help folks find that front door?
I believe if the commission would like to add an additional sign as an option tonight with your waiver approval, that should be okay.
That sounds great.
Our building, so the one other thing in our site in Bowie, what we did is we had a sign on the building that also was big, that said "Customer Lounge" with the arrow.
Yeah.
Is that part of this submittal?
Well, I think what Greg's proposing, it sounds great to me, which is that we just leave some loose language there to say, you know, we would like you to have approval from us essentially to work on some language for pedestrian signage at the front.
We are totally open to that. Part of this was showing that we were intending to do a monument sign for looks and appeal as well as information, but I'm very open to adding, I think at that point, the way customers are positioned possibly on the building might be the most effective.
Yeah, and again, I don't think it's part of today's design. I think it's probably something you need to figure out with how things are moving through the site, but if it becomes a nuisance, we want, I want, you know, there to be loose er language in the approval that allows you to put that other sign up.
Yes. Keep in mind, this is an area where we have our entire finished team. So there is also a team member waving folks in, opening the door, and showing them the way. So this is not a self-serve situation at all.
Great.
That's good to hear.
It makes a big difference, yeah.
Yeah.
High touch.
High touch.
Very much so.
All right. Any other questions on, oh, excuse me. So any other issues with the sign waiver?
Nope.
Okay. Final forestation, are we, yeah, we, for, excuse me, final forest conservation plan is a part of this? Any concerns with that? Okay.
Just glad to see a couple of trees in front of the building, actually. It's so rare. I would have whined about it, so thank you for putting them there.
And then on the site plan itself, any concerns with the use of the site layout? Any concerns with flow?
No, I think actually it's, it's a good layout. I mean, usually you see these car washes and people, especially in the wintertime, they're stacked up out on the boulevards, out on the highways. This has got some great space, and even if it overstacks, you're still going to be in a parking lot, not obstructing anybody else's access. So I think that's great. Good use.
Thank you.
Great.
I think after 35, 36 years, it's great to see something come on.
All right. Great.
Yeah. Yeah, it seems like a really nice addition to the community around this side of the thing. The one thing I will say, just what struck me, was how foreign the architecture looked compared to the precedent that was set by Festival, which is, you know, obviously a dated look now, but still, it's a, at least a type of material.
They have a standard.
Material palette, it's a type of building, and then the pet facility came along later and sort of echoed a little bit of that residential quality. So this is a little bit of a different, different approach. I don't know that there's any design guidelines that says we shouldn't do it, but it's just just sort of an observation that it, it kind of flies in with a whole different attitude about what facade colors should be. I do question, and I'll just kind of ask you this, the colors seem to echo the logo of the company, right? So like you're creating basically a color palette based on a logo as opposed to an architectural color palette. Is that fair? Is that where this all comes from?
It is fair.
Yeah.
Can you hold it up?
So...
Yeah, the rendering didn't lie. That's pretty robust.
So over time, the potential is that you could get, you could have pressure from the, the brand side of this to move the color palette somewhere else if logos change, if some of that is updated at some point. And the ACM panels, really, you can't do much with, they're going to, they're going to stay blue, but I guess the rest of the building is paintable or the other colors?
It's technically all paintable.
Yeah.
The wash that I sold in Bowie, the new operator had a different color scheme and painted it all gray, so...
That's too bad.
That's what I think as well, but that's what they chose to do, including the ACM panels.
Okay. But yeah, Greg, correct me if I'm wrong, we really don't have any, any guidelines in play over there anyway, so that's more personal observation than anything relevant. Yeah, okay.
So as far as the conditions go, we're not adding any... So as far as the conditions go, we're not adding anything?
What do you want to do about the sign?
I think my concerns were assuaged.
Oh, glad you were assuaged. It feels good to be assuaged.
So no 11th sign, so I'm hearing correct?
Well, to be clear, it wasn't number of signs, it was the square footage of the directional signs which were above the allowable area, correct? In aggregate or individually?
Individ, like individual, so directional signs in the code are only allowed to be up to six square feet. Signs, so they're requesting a bigger directional sign.
Exactly, so for sake of argument, if another small directional or something on the building needed to help reinforce direction for...
Yeah, but in the code does note that planning commission can, you know, limit or add additional directional signage on the site as part of the site plan.
If you think they've addressed it, if anything comes to it?
They have, yeah.
Okay. All right, any other concerns with the proposal?
No, I'm assuaged.
All right, very good. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony, staff report, findings, and recommendation grant SP-9915-2024 Preliminary and Final Site Plan Approval, Minor Sign Waiver Approval, and EMV-9916-2024 Final Forest Conservation Plan, filed in conformance with Section 24-12.6E and 24-12.6G and 24-8.7A1 of the city zoning ordinance with two conditions.
Second.
So moved in second at all in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you very much.
Looking forward to seeing that, seeing it come to fruition finally.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
That takes us to, from the commission, Danny, may I start with you tonight?
Surprisingly, I have nothing.
Can I come back to you and make something?
Right, exactly.
Matt, anything tonight?
Just a small nitpick. As you come down Sam I Highway, there's a monument sign with the letter G on there just before you get to the Target and the new Carnegie. It's brick, and it was put there, I believe, by a developer at one time. It's gotten kind of shabby-looking. It needs to be power washed, I would think. I mean, it's the entrance to the city, and it is a fairly prominent landmark, so if my recommendation would be someone get out there with a power washer and give it a good scrub down and make it look really nice the way it originally looked. That's it.
It's on like the exit ramp, like as you're coming up to the bridge?
Just before you're coming up to the bridge, yeah, yeah.
So now we're all going to go drive that way? What's he talking about?
Nothing for me. Carol, thanks for being here tonight, anything?
I just want to say that last week I went to the Gaithersburg Community Museum talk on Freedom Seekers and the role, and this was not their words, but the abolitionists and helping people escape to the north, the enslaved people. I found it to be extremely interesting, and it was held over at the local brewery. So I highly recommend those programs if you've got time to go to them.
Thank you.
I was just going to add on also, the Pleasant View Park is now open?
Oh, yeah.
Off of Muddy Branch, no, I'm sorry, off of 28, just before you get to, between the intersection of, let's see...
It's hard to find.
Is that Muddy Branch? Is that, what is that?
No, it's not Muddy Branch, it's 28.
Oh, 28, okay.
But it's really a really fantastic addition to the inventory, and please take advantage of it. It's open from sunup to sundown, and it's got a lot of new facilities, and I think people will enjoy it.
Yeah, his outdoor exercise.
You guys all want to bring your BMX bikes over?
Nope. Yeah, it's the former Consumer Product Safety Commission site when that agency was located on that location.
Wasn't it a Nike missile site?
Yeah, exactly.
All that stuff removed?
Oh, yeah.
All right, Greg, what's coming from staff tonight?
Not much for me tonight. First, I just want to thank or say happy Thanksgiving to everyone. It's our last meeting for Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
And then our next meeting is Wednesday, December 4th. That is actually the last one for the calendar year.
That's a quick turnaround, it's just two weeks away, I guess, right? How's the agenda looking?
You will have items on that agenda, one of those being the recommendation for the Spectrum Sketch Plan Amendment that you had the public hearing for a couple of weeks ago.
Okay, great. Frank, thanks for being here. Any updates from...
No, I congratulate Greg on his revised sign over there, noting his directorship, his ascension.
That's right.
Barely fits.
All right, Jasmine, thanks for everything. Anything to add or...
Nope, I have nothing.
Okay. And if there's nothing else, have a good evening, and we're adjourned.